Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 8th, 2017. After the Pledge of Allegiance, please stay standing for a moment of silence for the victims of this terrible shooting in Las Vegas. Fifty-nine dead, over 500 injured, and countless number of lives affected forever. It's very difficult to make sense of tragedies like this, and a friend of mine shared a quote from Fred McFeely Rogers, who brought Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood to all of us for over 30 years. And his quote is, "When I was a boy and I would see crazy things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers; you will always find people who are helping.'" So, special thanks to all the helpers and the everyday heroes. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda is a doc hearing.
Would you raise your right hand, sir? State your name.
Frank Bowen.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Please.
Okay. I'm here today for the -- to get an approval from Mayor and Council for a Majeski property, 349 89th Street, building a new home there, and putting in a new pier, ramp, and a float that's been approved by the DEP, taking out the old stuff and building the new.
I'm sorry, Ray.
Can I go?
Yep.
Frank, I don't -- I don't -- I'm 68, my eyes are pretty good. I can't read these.
I use a magnifying glass, I know.
I can't read the comments or anything, so I'm just going to ask you. It looks to me like you're taking out a fixed pier and a floating dock and a ramp.
Correct.
And it appears that the fixed pier that's going back in is smaller.
Correct.
Is that correct?
It is.
And the dock, what about the floater, do you know?
The floater that's going in is probably a little bit larger than the old one. It's been approved. I made notes, because I couldn't read it either. It's been approved for an eight-by-24. I think there was an eight-by-20 there originally.
Okay, so it's a little bit longer, is all it is.
Yeah.
But do you know the dimensions of the fixed pier that's going in?
Yeah, it's 10 by 18.
And what came out, or what is?
What came out was probably, I'm looking at it, probably 20 by, maybe 25 by 18, a lot larger. So, they got less. They weren't happy about that.
Am I standard question, no boat ramps, or no boat lifts?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
Thank you.
Not yet.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Is there a new bulkhead going in?
It's already been installed.
It's been installed.
Just finished it up yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we ask Frank about his thoughts on bulkhead, even though it's unrelated? Because we have him here, he's like the resident expert.
Or we can consult. Let's consult with him at another time.
Sure.
Because I'm sure you have a lot to say, so it's not going to be something you're going to say in 30 seconds.
Anytime.
Okay.
Anytime.
We'll get you.
Okay.
Nobody else has any more questions?
I'm fine.
Is anyone here to speak for or against this application? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. So, I need a motion approving the dock permit for 349 89th Street.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we want the permit number for the record?
It's just the Highland Design Group Incorporated.
That's who did draw the plan, yeah.
Okay.
And applied for the permit.
I can refer to that in the motion?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, communications. We did have several, they were read during the work session. We do not have any others. Do we need to accept those communications, not this part of the meeting, they're fine where they're at? Okay. So, public comment. Anyone wishing to address Mayor and Council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
Bob Ashman, 10301 First Avenue. I thought that was a good discussion you had in the work session. I had a couple of questions that sort of relate to that, but they're a little bit broader, and it may help you as you go forward. The first one is, our current ordinances, construction ordinances, who has the responsibility for enforcement?
Construction Office and PD, Jill?
Correct, yes. Construction Office and the Police Department.
Okay. What process is in place to review the performance of the police and the construction office on enforcing those? Is there any?
At this time, I mean, Jill, jump in, but I don't think there is right now, but I think moving forward, there will be.
That's what I thought, and that's the key to our problem, okay? We've had the, and that's not only the as ordinances, but there's others that are on the books that aren't enforced, which encourages more not following the rules. So, until we get a clear, and that everybody knows, not only enforcers, but the public and, in this case, the construction guys and whatever, what the clear lines of enforcement are, and what the penalties for lack of following them are, and enforce it, no matter what we do, isn't going to work. So, I think that's a big step you have to build into. I mean, I support those four things, and I'm kind of with Ray, they don't go far enough, but until you get a fixed sight of who exactly is responsible, and then who measures, are they doing their job? And if not, get rid of them and put somebody in there that will follow them, we're never going to solve it. So, that's my suggestion, that's a key part of it. The other part will be simple. And if you don't put that in, we'll be talking about this next year at the same time.
Yes, you're right.
No matter what you pass. So, that's my suggestion on it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bob, we already, the chief has already addressed this with us. He knew about this in September, about problems with the ordinance, particular ordinance, about trailers and things. He's addressed that, he's going, he's already gone out, he's already given warnings, so he is very familiar with that ordinance.
Well, I mean, but the ordinance has been on the books for years. I've lived there for years.
Yeah, but he was just made aware of it.
And there's no enforcement for years.
He was just made aware of it.
Well, yeah.
But that proves my point. There's nobody really responsible. If he just found out about it, I mean, it sounds like a great job.
No, I wouldn't go so far as to say he just found out about it.
No.
What has happened is enforcement is falling, here's how I'm going to say this, enforcement is falling back onto the Police Department.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
For several years, it was not expected of them.
I think that's entirely accurate.
So, we're saying falling back, so nobody was not doing their job or not aware, it
was not their responsibility.
And then part of, as you move forward, whoever has the responsibility, and it can't be dual, there has to be one person primarily responsible. They can delegate down, because you can't enforce when you, you know, there's, I did it, but he did.
Right.
So, it has to be one person.
It's going to be a cooperative effort between the Police Department and the Construction Office.
But it has to be clear who is responsible for taking it out.
Right there.
And then.
Jill.
It has to be, well.
They're administering.
But Jill doesn't go out and do it. She administrates it.
Correct.
Correct.
So, the chief will be overseeing his people?
It's my responsibility to oversee all the departments, to make sure that they are enforcing whatever codes we have on the books. I have addressed it with several departments, and I am monitoring that. We have seen an increase in our enforcement of the ordinances, and we will continue to do that.
Okay. But I agree, you really tighten up the performance review of whoever is supposed to be doing it, so that it doesn't slip back to how it's eroded over the past year. You know, it's how many were issued, how many problems, how many complaints. It's a simple way, you know, to do it. But until you have that, it'll tend to erode again.
That'd be part and parcel of the entire review.
Good, thanks, I hope you include that.
Thank you, Bob.
Jill, just from my information, we have hundreds of ordinances, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Well, but each department doesn't have to enforce hundreds. Each department has the ones that its specific department has to enforce. So, for that reason, things have fallen through the cracks, and that's the reason that my no parking sign on my street is still up there. Nobody has seen that. So, I really think that, in my estimation, if there are 30-plus construction sites going on right now, we need to give our construction man a bicycle and tell him to ride around town, and he could see every one of them in the morning. So, you know, he's got to drive by and see them, in my estimation, daily.
I think there's a different philosophy now. We have a whole change of administration as far as the mayor, and a whole new philosophy with a new police chief on how these issues are dealt with. The whole tenure, the tenor of everything has changed, and I think now you're going to start to see the results of what we're trying to put into effect.
I would agree with that.
But is it really the responsibility of the Police Department?
The problem is, some of the ordinances, they're things that happen between, for example, a covered dumpster, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So, the police are working, write it, jot it down, this address, get a picture, give it to Ray the next morning, and he goes and addresses it while there's somebody on the site. So, it's going to be a cooperative effort between the two.
Right.
And again, I brought this up at a previous meeting, so in that specific instance, you cover your dumpster at the end of the day, 6:00 PM, whenever you finish. I can't tell you how many times I arrive at my job site and the next morning, the cover's off and I got someone's couch in my dumpster.
Oh.
So, we have, again, I said, we have to be measured on how we approach this, because a dumpster without a cover on it doesn't mean that contractor has been delinquent.
How do you adhere the cover? Is it chain, like, is it straps?
It's a mesh cover.
Made with a bungee cord?
Yeah, but I mean, what keeps it on?
Bungee cord?
Little ties, whatever.
Little tie straps.
All you have to do is untie it. It's really easy.
Tie it tight.
People do it all the time. I, and here's a case in point, I've had jobs where I have cameras, and I see, you know, we talk about respect for neighbors, I've seen neighbors do it to my dumpsters. I've never called in or, you know, said, "Hey, I want this person sighted," but that's respect going the other way, because I see, hey, they have to put up with a dumpster next to their house in front of my job site. If they throw a couch in there, well, so be it. That's the cost of doing business. But I just want to say that, you know.
It is going to need to be a cooperative effort, because there's also Saturday and Sunday. So, that's why I say there will be some observations and reporting coming from the Police Department, and I'm totally confident that it'll be done.
Yeah.
It's going to be done, all of this is going to be done. We just got to have the time to get the mechanism in place, and also a clear-cut path of communication, so complaints do get to the right office, and then you do get to a warning, and you do get documentation, and you know, a warning leads to a summons, and so on and so forth. So, you have to have that whole trail of documentation, and I'm confident that we can do that.
Yeah, and it is already happening. There have been summonses that have been issued from the PD side, from code enforcement in certain instances. It's a work in progress. The mayor mentioned philosophies have changed over the years. Some things were more important than others, and as we evolve, and there's more construction, things out there that there's a necessity to enforce certain things where you may not have had to be as aggressive before. Now, you do, and council was proactive last year when we hired someone to do the code enforcement, where we really didn't have someone to do that aspect of it. So, I am confident that everyone will see improvements, but unfortunately, it won't be instant, but it will get better.
Thanks, Jill. Anybody else like to?
Hello to our mayor and members of council. My name is Dr. Walter Finkin, and I live at 16294th Street in Stone Harbor. I have two things that I wanted to talk about. One of them is the northeast corner of 96th and 3rd Avenue. There's been bicycles that have been tied up there for three years. And I've gone to the Police Department, and I've gone to the council, not council before, but I wondered why these things are still there. It's a hazard for people tripping, they're all rusted, the locks on them are totally no good anymore, and I thought it might be a good idea for the Police Department to go there and remove these bicycles before somebody actually falls and gets hurt. That's one of the northeast corner, it's right in front of.
Northeast corner and 96th and 3rd.
96th.
Sunglass Place in front of there?
Yes. Well, it's the store on the corner.
Trying to think, it's.
The new interior.
Northwest corner, I'm sorry, not northeast corner, northwest.
You're west, yeah, you're on the west.
I mean, where you go up behind Uncle Bill's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There is people that live upstairs. You do know that there's apartments, that they're above there, and people live there.
Yeah, but those bikes are so rusted, and the locks are so rusted.
We'll take a look.
I think they may have lived there.
Chief, will have somebody take a look at them? We'll take a look at them.
I think that's probably a good idea, clean up the street a little bit.
Okay.
And the other question I had is, I'm a retired dentist, and I'm a Mr. Fix-It, so I like fixing things up, and when we have the bulk trash here in Stone Harbor, I put stuff out so people can use it. I think there is an ordinance that says you're not allowed to do it unless you knock at the door and ask the person.
True.
But if somebody's right out front, they want to put it on their sidewalk, I mean, people come from all over to get things that are good things that people can use, other people can use, and our trashmen don't have to take it out of here. Our trashmen don't have to take the metal, they don't have to take this.
It's truly recycling.
There's so many people that come in and can use this stuff, less fortunate than me. So, I put stuff out that I want other people to use. And we were approached one day, a friend of mine and I were out there, and we're, I found a fishing rod with a reel on it and everything else. It was easy for me to fix up, but I was stopped by the police, saying that unless I knock on the door, I can't have it.
You can't take it.
I can get a citation for removing something from the front of someone's house.
Well, one, something happened, it's been many years ago, but it could happen again, where somebody walked up to the curb and they took something, and it wasn't for bulk trash. So, next thing you know, somebody came outside, and, "Where's my kayak?"
I agree.
And it was gone.
If it's a bulk trash weekend and everything's out, obviously, it's out to go away. So, there's people that come that can use things, furniture, chairs, tables, everything. And the reason we do it is so that other people can enjoy the things that maybe they can.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree, and I don't know what, I mean, Grant, if you want to give us some kind of insight on that, but I don't disagree. Somebody walked away with my old vacuum cleaner and all the attachments, last bulk trash.
Grant, don't we get a dumping fee for some, we get dumping fees.
We get.
So, we get money for that.
We get money, the borough gets money.
Right, but that money's coming from where?
From the MUA.
And where they getting it?
I guess.
From the taxpayer. So, it's all one big circle.
Yeah, but that's why we still.
Still comes from the taxpayer.
Let Grant say something.
Go ahead, Grant.
Go ahead, Grant.
You have two things. When we set up our bulk days, it's because the MUA takes that bulk for free. We don't pay for it. The problem we have is, we have these scrappers that come into town, and any metal materials that we pick up, we get credit for.
We get money.
So, you have a problem between scrappers and people that are coming into town to take that material to make a living. But, like the mayor said, and we have issues with people coming into town during those bulk times, and they're stealing from residents. So, you need to control that.
It's out front.
You need to control it.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I restored it, I could knock on the door, and I could ask anybody if I, if it was there, but most people leave, they put their stuff out, and that's it, they leave.
Correct.
So, that was my question.
Yeah, so like I said, I don't disagree with you that in some cases, there is, you know, some things that, but it is, I mean, it is something that has happened. People are taking things, and they're not meant for bulk trash, and then they're starting to creep a little five feet onto the property and grabbing something else, and you know, and you're, and nobody's thinking twice when somebody's taking something off a property. So, you know, unfortunately, it is a control that's in place.
And we had a problem with this last bulk trash, with people putting it out two weeks ahead of time, 10 days ahead of time.
Bulk trash is Tuesday.
Yes.
This Tuesday?
This Tuesday? Really? 10th. 10th of October.
Well, that's nothing.
So, but they started to put it out so, so soon, and then they'd had some pickers, or whatever you want to call them.
Pickers.
Pickers? I don't know what you call it. Scrappers come and get some of it, and then they disarray everything, and then it's all over the street.
Well, that's kind of true, too. Then it's like willy-nilly, pull this out, don't want that, don't want this. But, so, if they're seen.
They come at night, they're like.
The person that came to my house came with a pickup truck, and they came three times. I never saw any police patrol.
Well, that's what I mean, if the police aren't there to see it, so.
How would they know?
I mean, they're stopping left at a bright.
They're smart, they.
They do it in the dark.
There are police officers there, and public workers, and they come in, and they force or, after.
Yes, they do.
They do.
Yeah, they patrol.
But I'm going to say, I know where you're coming from, because there are some people who are using these items, they're being reused, they're not all selling them, they're reusing them because they don't have them. And there's a little bit of compassion, that's, I don't know how we can do an ordinance on it, but I agree with, if there's a nice table and chairs out there, what you want is for somebody to reuse that. You don't want to see it, the legs knocked off of it, and it chopped up. But.
Right, yeah.
But we just got to be careful. I need discussions, we should be up at the podium, so it can be recorded for the record.
In a case like that, you have Salvation Army and other, other different volunteer recycling places, you can take that material, too. They'll even come and get it from you. You have Habitat for Humanity is right out here in Courthouse.
Then they will pick up.
That you think can still be used.
They will pick up.
They will come.
Habitat will come into town and pick up your good furniture. But very.
No, they, no, they give it away to people that are in need, that's what Habitat is all about.
No, they sell it. Okay, the discussion, you guys.
The money that they.
Yes, the money that they make goes back to building homes, but Habitat will pick up, they, you just need to call them, they will take it out of your house, and if it's clean and usable and whatever, and that should make you feel better, because then they do put it in their store, and they sell it for almost nothing, but it's still rejuvenating and recycling.
And goes back into their organization.
And big brothers and big sisters also.
Thank you so much for your discussion.
Thank you.
And I was just doing it to help people.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would put nice stuff out, I'd fix it and put it out so they could have it.
That's great. You should go over and volunteer for Habitat, they'd love you over there.
Oh, yeah.
They would.
All right, well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else want to address Mayor and Council? A closed public portion, Resolution 2017-S 203.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2017-S 203 for adoption.
Second.
This is authorizing the issuance of $29,250,000 bond anticipation notes. This is basically a gathering up of existing notes and so forth in order to refinance. We're expecting a quarter, a quarter, one and a quarter percent interest rate on this, so this is definitely to our benefit.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-S 204.
Now, would this be a since it was amended?
No, because it hasn't been introduced.
All right, thank you. Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2017-S 204 for adoption.
Second.
This is, Public Works and the Borough of Stone Harbor have entered into a co-op with the Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing System to purchase seven new kiosk machines, one for $12,133, six for $67,904, per total of $80,003.7, each along with the equipment listed in the quote.
Any discussion?
I think there's a question.
Well, this says, so what is it?
Needs to be amended.
To what?
NJPA.
NJPA.
National Powers.
It's a different co-op.
Yeah.
I'll check.
National Powers.
Thank you.
Then you can offer it as amended.
Yeah, I'll just offer that same resolution as I spoke for NJPA.
Do we need a second if she's amending it?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
What do we call the roll?
After the roll.
We're going to call the roll. You can come up at the next public comment if you've got a question on any particular resolution that we're, as we go through.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-S 205.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2017-S 205 for adoption.
Second.
This is increasing the fees for the floating docks. They have not been increased in in quite a number of years, and it's going up to $250.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 206.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2017 S. -206.
Second.
Uh, this resolution, um, authorizes refund of a duplicate tax payment in the amount of $2,858.87 to the homeowners of 21802nd Street, Regis, and Jody McClelland for duplicate tax payment.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.